Call to order, the Lake Mills City Council on February 18th, 2020. And would you please call the roll?
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
All present.
Okay. And we would like to move to item number three, the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Taking us to item number four, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes for February 4th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made on those minutes? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Moving on to correspondence. Anyone on the council like to share correspondence you've received since our last meeting?
I had one question, and I haven't brought it up to anybody here yet. The antenna that's up there by the water tower.
Oh.
Is there a plan for them to put that back onto the water tower? Or do we know what's going on with that?
I think they plan on putting it back on the water tower as soon as they get time to do it. It's the Internet company. So I know they want to be back on top of the water tower. I just think that they haven't done it yet because they haven't had time.
Okay. Yeah, people were just asking when that was going to happen.
Now, is that the one that was supposedly behind this building?
No.
No.
This is, that's a different one.
He's talking about an Internet one that goes in the water tower on the west end, or on the east end.
It was the one that was on top of it before we started painting.
And then they took it off and they put it on a tower next to the water tower.
That, okay. And why did they do that? Because it had to be off and so?
Yes, it had to be off for us to be able to paint the water tower. So we allowed them to put up a separate tower next to the water tower. Because they needed to be able to provide, they didn't have any other option. They had one other tower and that's on the south side, but it just didn't provide the connection that they needed.
For their customers.
Right. So they went, they put that tower up. And after they got some complaints shortly after we started painting the water tower. And they haven't come back, but their indications were that they would come back and put it on the tower.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would look better back up top there and they'd probably get better service.
I'm sure they'll get better service because they'll be up significantly higher.
My service has been less than it was before.
Yeah.
And do we have any timeline on the one behind our building here?
No, they have, they did their environmental. I haven't heard back since. So I don't know where that report lies or their timelines are.
But they are moving in a positive direction?
Their response was is that they've started to move forward and they're doing their due diligence again.
Okay. All right. Thanks for bringing that up. And I wanted to bring up the other ones, so now we both have got that covered. Any other correspondence that? We did all get correspondence regarding the Senior Citizens Center in our emails. And the participation has been increasing right along, very steadily. Particularly people moving into Lake Mills that are really very happy about it. And so.
The forums. I can bring up, I was invited to the Wisconsin Public Policy Forum, which I'll be attending tomorrow evening. And then also the APPA rally next week I'll be going to.
What is that?
It's the Public Power advocacy out in DC.
You do that through WPPI. I had sent out a forum earlier in the year. Steve responded and actually contacted WPPI. They gave him what he needed to do and he completed it. And as representing us in Washington DC as a legisla, to the legislators. And what, I sent everybody else a copy of the Wisconsin Public Policy Forum.
Mm-hmm.
Steve sent back and had me sign them up. You don't really need to sign up, you can just go.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's open to everyone. They wanted to make sure that there were certain people that attended the meeting, so they had to sign up, but.
That is Thursday during the day?
No, it's tomorrow night at seven o'clock?
Seven PM tomorrow evening.
In Jefferson.
Wednesday night, okay. Something else is Thursday. I don't know what is.
I sent the document to you too, because I know Mike.
Oh, yes. I read it and I just talked to Steve about telling him thank you for signing up for it. So, okay. If there's no other correspondence, I don't see any other. We'll move to item six, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So I think you are here more to answer questions if we have some when we get to your item. Let's see. Okay. And so, I otherwise. All right. No one is approaching the podium, so we will go on to the city manager's report. And Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
I just have the January PD report. That's all I have at this point in time. Give the meeting short.
Lot of parking tickets.
Let's, let's put it this way, there was an emphasis on that and some department had meetings in the last month.
Did it take care of some problems?
Yeah. Some of it led to the conversation that we'll have tonight on the NSO. So it's a, it's a relationship between basically the time when we have our streets clear. So there's a parking ordinance and so. Then some of the new parking along South Main Street is also somewhat of an issue. And so we've kind of ran some of that up. But Police Department also has a lot of other items that they deal with on a regular basis. So we tried to get at least some enforcement in this month and then we'll try and kind of help shift it a little bit and.
Well, it is important for the snowplow drivers.
It is. And, and I, I know that there was some debate as to the level of urgency from one department to the other. And of course, if you're dealing with a pornography issue at the Police Department, writing tickets to someone who's parked on the street probably isn't as high a priority. So, but the street department doesn't know that, so there's a lot of hard feelings and so we have to work all those out. So Police Department's been very cooperative and.
It's communication, communication, communication.
Yep. Sometimes it always doesn't start out as a clear conversation, but it develops.
We're not a big city, but we have all the problems of a big city, even though they're in a smaller number. And this, you know, the percentage might be about the same for the population. Let's see. Any other updates on anything that we should have tonight on all the?
Keep it short tonight, I'll bring it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll have it ready to post theirs, that it's appropriate at this point. I wasn't ready.
Oh, that's fine.
Sure there, you know, we, we have a lot of items going on, but I wasn't. Last week we were a little bit busy and then I was sick and so it.
Yep. That's okay. But we'll look forward to that at the next meeting then.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing everything you're doing. And I want to also thank the department heads and staff beyond that. When I do come here, it seems like somebody's in a meeting in one of the rooms almost all the time. So they're really busy. That's good news to have people busy and doing their jobs. So, all right. Acceptance of minutes from the Joint Rock Lake Committee of December 3rd, 2019, and the Public Works Board of December 10th, 2019 will be accepted and placed on file. And that takes us to item nine, council business. Would you read the applicants for the licenses, please?
Ryan Cool, Carissa Killian, Andrea Ferri, Jonathan Hamilton.
Did someone want to make a motion to approve those licenses?
I move we grant the tavern operators licenses to the persons listed.
Second.
Okay. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Fix us to item B, the discussion decision on Sandy Beach Park food truck requests for proposals. So, let's see, once we have, let me get that. We do have a motion. Would you read that motion, please?
Motion 20221, authorizing the city manager to advertise a Sandy Beach Park food truck vendor request for proposals. Whereas section 66.0301 Wisconsin statutes authorizes cities and towns to enter and get contracts for the receipt of or furnishing of services. And whereas the city council has reviewed the issues of food service at Sandy Beach Park and determined to seek proposals for food service from vendors. And whereas the staff prepared a request for proposals for vendor food trucks to fill the food service need at Sandy Beach Park until a new restaurant is constructed. Be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. The city council does hereby approve authorizing the city manager to advertise the vendor food truck request for proposal and directs the council president to sign said motion.
Do I have a motion to approve this motion?
She'll move.
Second.
Okay. Now we can have a discussion. I just want to say for those watching on television or doing some other listening on the system, in case you missed the last meeting, we are looking at having food trucks at Sandy Beach till such time that we decide if we want to make something more permanent down there. And that's what this motion is connected to.
It's actually a little bit broader than that.
Okay. He's going to explain it better.
If you read the RFP, it allows us to evaluate multiple types of vendors and see how and where we want to place them in the park and at what times and places. So it, it says, go ahead, submit your proposals, whether you're a food truck or some other type of vendor. And then we will make, we will review them and try and put together the best package we can possibly put into the park for the summers that we're not, we don't have a restaurant. This is one that I, obviously I never write my own. These, this one was taken from the DeKalb Park District. And Dan and I and Dwayne kind of worked it over and reshaped it, but it's, it's consistent with all the things that were in there. So this is kind of how they do theirs. And I thought it was a good idea when I read it because, and I can tell you that I read about 15 of these, ranging from New York to California. But I like this one because of the way it allowed for vendors to submit proposals and to take those and construct a certain type of, of service within the park. It does include the potential to have alcohol. It doesn't require it, but allows people to provide that proposal to us to see if they want to try and do that. Then we would evaluate it. Obviously, all the finals are going to come back to the council for, for acceptance or approval. But it gives you an idea of what's kind of structured in here and what kind of timelines we're looking at. It covers all the insurance items. It covers, you know, employees. We did tone it back a little bit from what was required at DeKalb as far as, as the employee requirements. But it does have some employee requirements there. If we're bringing in people to work at the beach, we want them to at least have some level of background on their people so that we aren't encouraging people to be at the beach. We wouldn't want down there with young kids or something along that line. So it does, I think, provide a very good basis to start working from, seeing as it's our first one at this food proposal type deal. But I think it gives us a very good structure to work from.
Have you worked at all, this leads me to the question as to what the layout are? Are you looking for the proposals to come in and then decide on how, where layout would be and stuff like?
The way we looked at it was is we wanted the proposals to come in. We have an idea where we want the food trucks, but the other types of vendors could be spread out through the park. We don't want to overpopulate the park with vendors because if nobody's had, you know, if there are too many, nobody's happy. All right? And there are certain times where, like on weekdays, one would probably, one vendor is probably enough. On weekends, you probably want at least two, maybe more. And there are certain weekends where, you know, four or five isn't enough. So it's, it's kind of finding that balance and figuring out what people are looking for when they write their proposals to us. It's also understanding that this is how the park lays out. This is where we could put you. If you're not satisfied with that, then you, you know, we're not, you don't have to be in our park. Those are kind of the things that we're going to try and work through. So that's why, instead of just looking at their proposals and accepting a proposal or not, we have a committee that evaluates them and then communicates with the vendors. It says, okay, this is how we see this working. Is this what you see working? And then as we finalize that, when we can put it on the table before the council and say, this is a, this is what we believe will provide us with the best coverage for the time periods that we're looking at.
So there's one thing that I, I've looked through here and I've read and read and I was hoping to see it, something about conflict resolution. I've ran into this before where you'll have one vendor saying, this person, this vendor didn't clean up after themselves. So these guys are selling this and they shouldn't be selling that. And, you know, he said, she said thing and all sorts of issues pop up from that. And we've normally had to have some sort of a little board that handled conflict resolution to make sure that it was fair all the way around and.
To a certain extent, what, what I want to look at is when we sit down and have these conversations, I'm hoping that comes up. Then we can finalize with contracts. This, this is not a contract and I wouldn't want this to be the contract. What we'll do is we'll look at it and say, okay, here's our contract for this season. And this is how it'll function and then we'll put conflict, conflict resolution in there along with a couple of other items that we believe are important at that point in time. But this does give them an idea of what their expenses are going to be. Because we, we do lay out the insurance, we do say that you're going to have to do some background checks. So basically what we tried to do is say, hey, these are going to be your expenses. Give us your best proposal. At that point in time, then they can come in and say, hey, you know, I have to have so much business. We can tell them how many people are at the beach. And then we can kind of work through who's, you know, who's there when and how often.
Yeah. The biggest conflicts came up when this guy sells hot dogs. This guy says, I'm only going to sell pizza. And then next week they start selling hot dogs. And then they start having some wars. So as long as we get that thought about and covered.
Yeah, I think that we can evaluate that as we are going through the flow.
Yeah, because I saw you're asking, what are they going to serve and stuff like that? So that, that's helpful.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to allow guests to come up and speak.
I'll second. Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Thank you for coming.
Sure. Patrick Doyle, Doyle's Dogs, Lake Mills. Steve, we had talked previously about the Snack Shack building there and whether that was going to stay. Because that, for, for me, that would be part of a proposal of which that building does not have water or anything like that, which we carry our own. But from a, if you're looking at individual dates versus saying, are you willing to commit to a series of dates, knowing if that building was available, if nothing more, from a storage standpoint? So you're not moving everything in every day would help in putting together a, a package to say, here's what we could do for you. Rather than saying, we can do this date and that date. There are going to be high, high dates that people are going to want because that's going to be your really high traffic. Question would be, do you balance that with, yes, you've got these high traffic days, but you're also willing to be there on the other days when it's maybe not as high traffic, but you're providing consistent service?
So he's asking, you're asking if the building's going to be there this summer?
Correct.
Yes, it will be there this summer. The demolition is just for the restaurant. The, there is a place in the boat launch grant where they do removal of some of the asphalt in the park. And there was a piece there where they could remove that too. But if we decide at that point that we don't want to, we'll just change that out. So yes, it will be there this year, for sure.
Okay. For me, that would matter from a standpoint of rather than just coming in for key dates versus saying, we're willing to come in for a long-term period of dates to, to fill some of the, the days that aren't going to be as profitable. But you're looking at everything as a package and that would make it more feasible for us from a storage standpoint. So will you, do you know or will you decide what the usage of that building is going to be? And whether there's any exclusivity to that as far as storing product that's not open to other people? You know, how secure that space would be?
That's something we'd have to negotiate through and figure out. I'm sure that if we have a vendor who comes in and, and covers all the bases with one proposal, then obviously they would be able to have it. You know, if we need to set up a pod somewhere for another vendor or something along that line, that's something we can discuss too. I, I'm not opposed to the, I want to hear as many options as I could possibly have and see what's available. We want, we want to provide a high-quality service.
Sure.
We have had over five people ask that we send them this. So it's already out there that this is available and people are interested. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look and, and see what options we can put together as far as making storage available in some form or fashion.
Okay. Thank you.
Going back to the motion itself. You feel that the motion as it stands right now does cover what you need it to cover?
Yes, it just allows me to advertise this. Unless you want to make some changes to this form, then that would be a separate motion of some form, but suggestion.
Yeah. I can't see any changes right now. It's one of those things, if you don't try it, you don't know what you need to change.
Well, and you can bring it back to us.
I have to.
Well, I'm just talking about, you know, if you go to bed tonight and you go, darn, I didn't put that in that motion they passed tonight. You can bring it back to us and we can reconsider. Would we reconsider or would we just, something like that?
Depends on what, on what happens. What kind of proposal I'm bringing back. If it's something you've already voted on, then, and I want to change that. But if it's just an addition to what's there already, it could be a separate, totally separate motion.
Okay.
I'm sure that Dan will.
Well, it's new territory for us.
Ann and Vic will straighten me out on those.
Yeah. And we might make some mistakes along the way. It's possible since it's not something we've done before. But we'll never know if we don't try.
Yep.
Call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Okay. We're going down the Yellow Brick Road here. Let's see if we end up in Oz, huh? All right. Let's go on down to the next agenda item. Item C, discussion and decision on the Sandy Beach Park archaeological grant. And this is the one which we really, we don't have to have a decision about anything tonight. You want to speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, I, I really need to because the way it's, it's memored is, is a little bit confusing. We were looking at doing a grant for the interpretive part of the archaeological report that we got. So what they looked at is how to get a grant to do interpretive education related to the project that we would look at doing for putting all that information together and putting it into a area around the, the new boat launch. She listed out a number of grants that were available, but her memo was really pointed to this point. And that was is that they almost all require that the city of Lake Mills be a certified local government under the Wisconsin State Historic Preservation Office and Department of the Interior requirements. And then it, it goes on to, you know, say how CLGs have to apply, get to apply for certain things and along that line. I think at one point in time, Lake Mills had looked at being a CLG and had looked at putting together a Historic Preservation Commission. putting together a Historic Preservation Commission. It ended up that the Planning Commission was designated Historic Preservation and that we never actually complied with any of the CLG requirements.
Historic Preservation Light.
Yes, we did Historic Preservation Light. Is that's what Vern called it at the time?
No, but that's what I'm calling it.
So, uh, we did not become a CLG. I think of the original push was to become a CLG. When you move into a CLG and you set up the Historic Preservation documents, it becomes a little bit more heavy-handed from the State Historic Preservation Office.
That was the reason why we held back from doing that.
I believe that a lot of the property owners downtown felt that it would become onerous to have a Historic Preservation Ordnance in place. So, the debate is, is do we become a CLG and go through that process? Or do we fund this on our own without going through a grant? Or do we find some other way of funding it? Or?
Do we know how much funding we would need?
I don't know yet. I haven't pushed design. I was looking for the grant first. I imagine that when I get Mr. Watson back, he could probably give me a pretty good idea. But at this point in time, I had asked to find all the grants that were available. They did, and then they said, here, but here's the requirements. And one of the big ones was CLG. So I'm, I'm gonna change my focus on that. I will price it out and I, but then it's probably gonna be finding grants that are non-CLG-related or funding it on our own or going through the CLG process, which, again, I know has historically been not a popular idea.
I don't see anything here that looks like the State Historical Society. You know, like, is there possibly something at the state level? Maybe I'm wrong, I just, I see national and, you know, it seemed.
Down in the potential grant opportunities, says Wisconsin, State Historical Society lists forty-two grant opportunities.
Oh, okay, that's what they're, I missed that.
I think they still all require CLGs.
There is no, is there any money budgeted for this? I don't think there is.
For the, for the interpretive education? No, no, we could, you can do that anytime after the boat launch is done. So we have time, it's not a, not a rush. But it, we kind of wanted to keep up on what Commonwealth provides us as far as the historic features. And then be able to appropriately handle them and get them in place.
I'm kind of imagining display cases and stuff like that, maybe over a roof. I've seen them where there's a roof covering them, so protect them from the sun and.
I imagine that's probably pretty consistent with what we would see. You'd probably see two or three of them, maybe four or five, depending on where, you know, this was found here and this is, this was in this type of thing. And here were several other items that were found with it and this is how they probably, and, you know, and then there's another one over here. And this one is in from the 10,000 years ago and this one's from the 2,000 years ago. So you're probably gonna see several of those based on the, if, if you, you know, from reading that report, it seemed like we would probably have about five.
It'd be nice, Stephen.
Sorry, go ahead.
It'd be nice if someone was put something like that if we decided to do a restaurant down the road in like the entryway there or something. So people who came to visit would see that versus just the people out on the boat landing.
Yep, yep. It could start there with the first one right at the door and then kind of have a pathway that ran you through them. So that's what I've seen historically, but, you know, this is, we're now talking about design and I, I really am not a designer.
We might be able to partner with the Aslan Historical Society, too, when we get to that point of what it is that we want to do for display purposes.
It's true.
Because I think they have quite a bit of interest in this.
They do.
And collections, too.
I wonder if they would qualify for the grants.
They might be able to qualify for a different kind of a grant.
Whatever it takes.
But there's no rush on this. We don't have to, we don't have to act on it tonight and.
My only thought on it is, you know, if we finance it ourselves, we just have to meet our own requirements and it might be ultimately cheaper, less expensive.
Certainly will eliminate a lot of paperwork back and forth from Chippewa and then the Because I know when we did the historic districts, it got sent to Wisconsin Historic Preservation Office. They reviewed it, then it got sent to the feds and they reviewed it. I don't know if you remember, but the feds hung on to it for months. Actually held up the contract signing for like three months. So, yeah, it could easily be a cheaper project based on the fact that we do it ourselves.
And maybe there's something with the State Historical Society. If I, and maybe through the Lake Mills Aslan Historical Society, where they've got people who are trained to take and do displays, who could help us get things set up and organized and so on. I'm sure they do. Because they do a lot with, you know, they do stuff like this, display work for local historical societies and so on. That's one big place to kind of talk to and see.
Okay, well, this is just a discussion one, make sure you, if you're rat, and if you're, if you're looking for any certain types of actions, let me know.
Well, and I agree with the Planning Commission that we don't want to lose control of this. We've got enough things in our city where other people are telling us what to do and I think we need more of that, unfortunately. You know, we had to do some things to get money from the state for the highway and there are times when we have to because it's, you know, financially frugal to do that, but this isn't one of them as far, you know, I don't, I think we could probably budget this without a problem if we want to.
I will try and get an idea of what cost it would be.
Did you have any idea of the, kind of, an amount floating around?
No, I do not.
I'm thinking like a hundred and fifty, what it costs.
I, I would think not. I'm thinking more in the fifty to eighty.
Well, especially if we did some of it in a restaurant, that would be different, Joe.
Well, let's just leave it as it is for the moment. And as something changes or we get some information or somebody comes forward and says, gee, I'd like to help sponsor this, I think it's a good idea. Because we do have a lot of community foundations and groups that might decide they'd like to be a part of this. So let's give, let's do a little bit of time out there to let some of those things percolate. Does that sound okay to you?
Well, fine with me.
Okay, and so we don't have to have a motion on this. Okay, so should we move on? All right, that's fine with me. Let's continue here. Ordinance twelve eleven, would you read the title for that? And now, do we need more than the title read on this? Let's see, it's, it's two pages long, we don't.
Should read it out for the first.
What is the thought of the council?
I can read it all.
Okay, go forward.
Ordinance twelve eleven, amending chapter one fifty-three officers and employees and adding article five Neighborhood Service Officer. Section one five three dash nine, delegation of authority, issuance of citations and corrective orders. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hereby amend chapter one five three by adding a article five Neighborhood Service Officer. Section one five three dash nine, powers and duties of Neighborhood Service Officer as follows. Section one, in accordance with Wisconsin statutes eight hundred point zero two, two A, the City of Lake Mills may designate by ordinance or resolution municipal officials who are authorized to issue and be named in citations or complaints with respect to ordinances which are directly related to the official responsibilities of the official. Officials granted authority to issue and be named in citations and complaints may delegate with the approval of the governing body the authority to employees. Authority delegated to an official or employee may be revoked only in the same manner by which it is conferred. Section two, chapter one five three, section five Neighborhood Service Officer. Section one five three dash nine, powers and duties of Neighborhood Service Officer. A, the Neighborhood Service Officer shall be delegated appropriate authority by city departments for general enforcement of certain sections of the City of Lake Mills Code of Ordinances, including issuance of citations and correction orders to violations in enforcement of appropriate sections of the City of Lake Mills Code of Ordinances. One, authority of general enforcement, including issuance of citations and correction orders for violations of chapter four seven nine nuisances, may be delegated to the Neighborhood Service Officer by the Police Chief, Fire Inspector, Parks and Forestry Director, Director of Public Works, and Building Inspector. Two, authority for general enforcement, including issuance of citations and correction orders for violations of section five seven three, streets and sidewalks, articles one, obstructing streets and sidewalks, article two, sidewalk and vaults, article five, obstruction and encroachments, privileges in streets, article seven, snow and ice removal, article eight, excavations, may be delegated to the Neighborhood Service Officer by the Police Chief, Parks and Forestry Director, Director of Public Works, and Building Inspector. Authority for general enforcement, including issuance of citations and correction orders for violations of chapter six fifty subdivision regulations, article two administration and enforcement, and chapter six sixty zoning regulations, article two, general regulations, article six, signage, and articles nine, zoning procedures and administration, may be delegated to the Neighborhood Service Officer by the Building Inspector. Authority for general enforcement, including issuance of citations and correction orders for violations of chapter two seven one, brush, grass, and weeds, and chapter five nine four, trees, may be delegated to the Neighborhood Service Officer by the Parks and Forestry Director. Authority for general enforcement, including issuance of citations and correction orders for violations of chapter four four five, licenses and permits, may be delegated to the Neighborhood Service Officer by the Police Chief. B, authority delegated to the Neighborhood Service Officer may be revoked in the same manner by which it is conferred. Section three, adoption of this ordinance amendment has been sponsored by City Council Representative Vicki Schmidt. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication.
Okay, so this is an ordinance, it will have three readings. There's no rush on this.
I can tell you the department heads are dancing in the streets.
To have some help with this.
Yes, it's not their favorite part of the job is these, these kind of nuisance-type things that are, so having someone to go around and be able to follow up on them and then if need be, generally, the NSO will talk to the department head and he will authorize them, they will authorize him to write tickets. Or sometimes they may direct him to go out and write tickets. One of the situations we were looking at, which we were kind of mentioning earlier, is that people were parking during a major snow event on the street. And the police department was busy and the street department wanted the cars out of there. Well, the city code says that they're supposed to be ticketed and towed. Well, if nobody's there to ticket and tow them, they stay there and I don't know if you watch at night, but it's hard to see when you're plowing snow to begin with and then you're trying to work your way around cars. And then if it freezes and thaws, you got a big bump out there and it's hard to deal with again in the future to plow off. So there are a lot of safety issues involved in getting those cars off the street. So we, we talked about it and said, hey, if Brian has the, can come in and make the initial contact and, and it wouldn't be all the time, most of the time, the police department's gonna handle it. But if, if they're, they're busy and they are busy quite a bit, they could use Brian to cover that for them. Rob has been using him a lot for snow removal. He has been doing vision triangles, particularly with snow getting stacked up and other issues. So all the departments have kind of started to lean on Brian now to take care of their initial contacts. And sometimes they're at the point in time where they felt like, in order to continue to follow up with this, he needs the authority to be able to issue citations. It's a goal to make the initial contact, so he's got a lot of letters written up that say, you know, this is what you're violating, city has an expectation. I know we get a lot of, well, they've never done that before.
Well, that's true.
And that's what he says is true, but there's a new expectation now that we will try and clean these up and, you know, like garbage cans in the street, clear violation. That's a state law that you can't create a safety hazard in the street, so putting your garbage can out there. Why you would do that, you know, to look at getting sued by having someone accidentally hit your garbage can and hurt somebody is, but that aside, there, there are all these little kind of knickknack things that department heads don't really want to have to take care of that Brian is now at the point where he's ready to start moving in and picking that up. And they all feel comfortable with him doing it and, and so it's, it's time to put this in place.
Well, and we have two more readings. If there's somebody who has input, they can come to the next council meeting or call one of us and email us or whatever, if there's something about it that they like or don't like. I think we need to remember that if we're going to have rules and laws, we have to enforce them, otherwise, why have them? I mean, you know.
Our, our initial response was with Brian was is to have him be that first contact, make it in a way that was like, I don't know if you, you all probably worked with Brian a little bit. He sits down, he has a lot of conversation, he kind of tries to get you to understand what the goals and operations are. And, but at some point in time, there needs to be a little bit more. The ticket one for being parked on the street during a snow emergency, I mean, there's nothing you're gonna do there. Brian's gonna try and make any initial contact, but if he can't, you're gonna ticket it towed. That's, so there's some situations where we're just, we're just gonna be, we're gonna be more aggressive on that.
Well, I think some people in South Maine were confused by the bike lane, too. Especially on, you know, the one side you can park, the other side you can't park, but it looks like there's parking because of the bike lane. And I, I saw just driving back and by and I thought, oh, boy. I bet they're just thinking that's a parking area. So it's gonna take a little time to get used to what it really is.
The one I saw that I knew was gonna create confusion is down here at the end where you're coming north up to Water Street and that parking lane disappears and that, so it's just, the east side is then become where it doesn't have any parking, people were still parking in the bike lane. And I don't know if that's confusion about, you know, there's parking on the east side or not, but if there's a bike lane there, there's no parking.
Maybe we need to put some sawhorses or something there till people get used to the fact they can't park there.
We put up no parking signs.
Well, that, too.
Yeah.
I'm a farmer.
And, and one of the, one of the easiest things to do is, is just get out and write a site-up warning. Say, hey, this isn't a parking. Say, "Hey, this isn't a parking spot." You do that for a while, and then you start writing tickets, and then... So a little bit of the, a little bit of the parking emphasis, or the ticket emphasis.
Kind of, kind of like the stoplights, install those.
Yeah.
Okay, so, anybody else have feedback on this before we move on? Okay, I'm not. So, let's see what's, and that is the last thing on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, does anybody have recommendations for future agendas? Now, we will be seeing some things coming from Planning Commission in the next couple.
We'll see the final plat, hopefully, um, from Tyrannian Point. There should be a zoning recommendation on that too.
That also went through the Public Works Board, didn't it? That's what I thought.
That's, that's why I said hopefully, there's still some underlying issues on that that they haven't finalized with us yet. And the Public Works Board gave staff the authority to say, "Hey." So if, if they don't, then it's going to definitely be a conversation piece at the council meeting that, and one of them was the water pressure issue. And there, there's some debate there as to, and our rules say that it's 35, and they are above 35, but we all know that people who have water pressure of less than, or at 35 in their upper level are going to be calling us and complaining about the water pressure all the time, because that's a static at that time. If there's six people downhill flushing their toilet, their static pressure may not be that high. So, I was hoping that, you know, we would have this resolved before we got back here.
It's definitely won't be?
No, I don't know if it will be or not.
It's possible it might be.
It's possible.
Um, one thing that we've kind of dropped the ball on is the branding.
Yeah, we had talked about it, but-
Do we want to-
I kind of begged off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve begged off for a bit because of all the stuff going on, so.
Yeah, and, and, um, I did meet with Erin this week.
Oh, I didn't know that.
She was looking at trying to finish it up. I, again, begged off, but I asked her, she, some conditions for her have changed, so she had some stuff that she wanted to show us. So I said, "Send it in, and I'll try and get it into a study session as soon as I can."
Anybody have anything else that needs to be brought back up to the forefront of our agenda? Okay, well, seeing none, um, meeting is adjourned.